Yeah, we're on. Thanks for everybody for coming. Thanks for working through the summer.
Shut my thing off.
I was.
And we're back.
And we're back. We have the manifest. Yeah, okay. You do it. I'll do it after. Minutes, we need to approve the minutes of June 11th for public and non-public and June 29th for public and non-public.
July 29th.
Did I say, what did I say? June. Oh, I said June.
It's a team sport tonight.
Thank you. I gotta get back in the swing of things. I need a motion to, do we want to do this as a group? Does anybody want to pull anything out? Are we good? As a group, if we make a motion to accept them?
I'm proud of the group.
All right, it's gonna be you and Kayla tonight. Do the motion.
I'll make. I'll make the motion.
Second. Discussion. Does anybody have anything?
To get to that tab, but I don't recall.
I just, I made a note about the July 29th meeting that we should separate the public and non-public minutes.
That was on me because I took them.
Yeah, they've all together, but we just separated them out for the records. That's all I had.
Sorry, Maria, I let you down.
And thank you very much for David and Anna for taking the notes. That meeting, it was very good. They were very good notes. All right, so are we ready for the question?
Yep.
Any, all those approve, all those say aye? And all those in favor, thank you. It is getting back in the rhythm.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we'll get there. Citizens comments. Mr. Carrier, do you have anything? Is there anybody on mine? Can't see. Okay. Introduction of student member is, he not, wasn't invited, right? By mistake. My fault for not mentioning it. So we'll see him at the next, next month's meeting, but Jamison Stebbins is the student school board member. Superintendent's report.
Chair, like so, is, it was a pretty robust report, I think, for everybody.
It was a long one.
Being the first meeting back, we've had quite a few things going on and things going on, so just as you know, because you have to believe you're the recipients of our new final four, final forms platform with our online registration. A couple bugs in the initial rollout as to any new platforms going to, when to have, but Maria and the team just tackled them and working with final forms. My understanding is that the customer service has been pretty, pretty good and very responsive. So they've been able to fix bugs right away so that they don't replicate, things can get done. So, but thank you for letting us know that there was something not right with it. That's what prompted us to reach out and fix it.
I did mine last night and I had not one bug.
Perfect.
I was able to do them, I did the sports for Sophia in high school and then I ran down to Grace's and that in the elementary and it was so nice because it was all of Sophia's information was in Grace's.
It was quick.
The dad piece for Grace, obviously, but that was like so easy. So I was like, oh my gosh, that was great. It was, it was great.
That's awesome. So yeah, we'll continue to roll forward with it. It's gonna help us tremendously. Obviously with the back to school event, it's gonna make it much easier for people to get their bracelets, to be able to fly on through. And so we'll have people coming through, some folks who may struggle with the, the online part because either don't have connectivity or they don't have a device. I know you can do it on your phone, but I think it's probably hard to do on your phone.
I was doing it on my phone.
No, I did it on my phone.
It was pretty easy.
Yeah.
I saw there were issues, so I haven't even looked at it yet.
Yeah, I was gonna do the meal one.
So now I'll do it.
Sophia's was frustrating for like three seconds. And then Grace's, I literally did hers in no time. And the only part that was annoying is like if I missed like the, the questions where I was like, you had to either do yes or no and it's a line. And if I messed up and I didn't get a no, you had to go back on your phone and type in your signature again. And that's the only person, really make sure you don't miss a toggle. Because then you have to.
Answer all the questions.
Yeah, but it was honestly, I thought like, this is so much better than paper. And I think the kinks, to me, by the time I got to it, all worked out.
Oh, good.
None I know. And even like the uploading the sports form.
Yeah.
So easy.
Nice.
Oh, my gosh, wonderful.
Well, thanks Maria, Justin, the team that worked on it, certainly administrative assistants. I know they had another meeting today. They've worked very hard on that for quite some time, so anything we can do to make it more efficient and easy, that's the name of the game. And so, and then on Monday night, I know Justin will have his tech team over there as well with laptops set up or desktops that are in there. And will assist parents with finishing off the information and helping them work their way through. So our goal is to have a higher rate of online reg, or student registration forms on time for school with less labor on our side as well as less cost. Maybe think about the postage that we were paying and the amount of labor time to stuff.
Yeah, enter all that.
Six envelopes to six kids in the same family, you know, just those kinds of things. So this is great. So we're excited about it. The hot topic, obviously, there are four specific policies that came out. The one that they recommended, the School Boards Association, to have us deal with first and asked is the school ban on cell phones. And so I've listed in my report, not just some of the explanation of the policy, but the recommendation under 1891A5, which requires us to ban the use of cell phones or any personal communication device from bell to bell. So that bell to bell means 7:50 to 2:45 at the middle high school and opening bell to closing bell. I just can't remember what they are, Molly, at the elementary school.
Our times?
Yes.
So instructional time, 8:35 to 3:20.
Perfect. Yeah, so it doesn't say students can't bring their phone. But maybe wise for students who drive vehicles and leave their phones in their cars, or for elementary students, perhaps their phones are at home, or there's the, the protocol for how the two schools are gonna manage that is up to the schools. It's up to the two principals and how they're going to manage and communicate that. The board's responsibility is for, to the, the development and enactment of the policy. Which is, of course, now it's bound by law. Before it was recommended, now it's bound by law. And so the board's required to have a policy that bans cell phone use bell to bell. We're achieving that with policy JICJ, unauthorized communication devices. I included the link in there. This was not developed by, in time for us to have our policy committee meeting. And we didn't want to wait until our next policy committee meeting. And therefore, we felt that the board as a whole should have it in advance, review it. We did the similar thing in Winchester. We wanted it in place prior to school starting. We've already been communicating with families. You know, we read the news, but for those who haven't, our principals have also sent information home regarding this policy. And so I do have the policy here. I hope you found an opportunity to read it. There was one question, a good question we had in Winchester that most likely someone's gonna have in their mind here is what about the smartwatches? And so what we want to do is, we're gonna want to start collecting smartwatches. What we want to make sure is that students understand that use of a personal communication device such as a smartwatch is going to require us to collect your smartwatch, if that's the protocol that, that Ms. Roth is gonna put in place. At the K8 school, the first offense is, yes, you give us the watch and you get it at the end of the day, we, we call home. The second one is, we get the watch and you don't get it back. Your mom or dad have to come and you can't come back to school with it. So they go real hard and fast on that. It's a K8, a little different than high school.
That's actually how the policy reads. The policy lists what the.
What she recommends. Yes, and so the policy as you, as is being presented to the board should include that all subscribe to the student code of conduct of the Hinsdale School District. It shouldn't list the exact consequences in there.
And for your knowledge, it didn't change anything at the elementary school because it already.
Already was, yeah.
Cannot see it, don't want to see it, if they don't want to hear it. And we only had one issue last year.
Elementary school kids.
I am aware of which students had it in their backpack, but they were kind of funny about it, they didn't tell me. And they're like, but it's because I'm going to grandma's house with, I mean, you know.
Sure.
So we had one issue and it was, it got picked up. So that was it. Nothing changed in our, how we do it.
Yeah. Gonna be a lot different in this.
So, and I had sent to you the draft of the school policy as it had been written. And when I rewrote it for us and Winchester, consequences for violations of this policy will be pursuant to the respective Hinsdale Schools' student code of conduct.
Yep.
And so for both your student handbooks in here that outline the student code of conduct, it should outline whatever the consequences.
Did you remove the additionally part? I'm just looking at the draft that you sent us.
Right, so you, you should have the, my update that includes the link to the policy.
We don't see your board report.
I don't like you guys knowing what I'm telling you. So it did. So very, very quickly, under consequences and violations. It's, students are not permitted to use any electronic device to record audio or video media or take pictures of any student or staff member without their permission. The distribution of any unauthorized media may result in disciplinary action. School reserves the right to monitor, inspect, copy and review a student's personal electronic device subject to limitations of our state 1897. If there's a reasonable suspicion to believe that a student has violated board policies, regulations, school rules, or has engaged in other misconduct while using their personal electronic device. Consequences for violations of this policy will be pursuant to the respective Hinsdale Schools' student code of conduct, period. Then it moves on to E review.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so it just points right to your code of conduct.
Yep.
That's it.
Yeah. And ours already said you can't bring anything from outside.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. So with that, I would ask if the board has any questions on this policy. We'll pause my report, we can answer those, and then we'll move to action on improving policy.
How are we gonna prevent them from going into the bathroom and using their cell phone?
Realistically, we can't because we're not in the bathrooms with them. We set the expectation that they're not bringing them into the bathroom because there's a reasonable expectation of privacy in the bathroom, which maybe you shouldn't be having your phone in there. This might be taking pictures or whatever. Some teachers will collect them, collect their phones at the start of class. That was already happening at some classrooms here. But, yeah, I mean, realistically, we can't prevent all the things. We can set our expectations, but we can respond when we don't meet them. And I think we already have an idea of, like, these are the times or places that they're gonna try to use them, like the bathroom, like passing right. So those are the times where we're gonna have to focus our attention to mitigating that. We do have a carve out for if it's a required.
Communication.
Carve outs in there.
Yeah, I read that. And so are we saying they can have an Apple Watch on them? They just can't be using it as a phone, like, monitor things, but you can't, if you're looking at it, then you're obviously using it as a phone?
Correct, so as a phone or a texting device.
Right.
Right, so if students are using it, then they're in violation of the policy, which means they're subject to the code of conduct. Whatever it is that the school's outlined. So qualifies as a personal electronic device. The thing I'd like to hesitate doing is collecting all electronic devices. Right, now the policy says we're not liable for anything lost or stolen if we do collect it. We shouldn't have it, shouldn't have been using it in the first place. And I think we get to a threshold where we're pulling watches and stuff up for students and then we start losing.
Right.
We all know they're expensive devices. We don't want to put people in that situation.
Yeah, it's just gonna be an argument, especially with the watches when they're like, I wasn't texting anybody.
Can we say it should be on do not disturb or something? So then you're not getting notifications? Yeah.
Put it theater mode.
Right.
They can turn off their notifications. There's a lot of things that we can ask them to do, but I think that's similar to the like, how are we gonna prevent them using it in the bathroom?
How much, like, what do, what do you say give you at a concert?
Yonder Pouch.
Yeah, what do we, what is it called?
Yonder Pouch, Y-O-N-D-R.
A yonder.
Pioneer Valley's using it.
Yeah.
A school uses it?
Yeah. There's been a lot of kickback.
FCL grant in the last district, we earmarked $10,000 for them and our school is half the third of the size of.
Yeah, they're expensive.
And kids figure out how to break them. They put burner phones in them.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
So.
There's always ways around everything.
Yeah, with the watches, it, it will.
Right.
It will cause, it will.
Yeah.
You know.
It's gonna be an issue.
Create an opportunity for argument and power struggle for sure because kids will say, I wasn't, I was just checking the time, I was checking my heart rate.
$30 a pouch.
Yeah. So I think in the beginning, it's gonna be a lot of reminding students of our expectations. Starting the year off, being very clear, I already put it in my newsletter. Heard it went all around Snapchat.
I wasn't gonna tell my kid, so that's unfortunate. I was just gonna let, like, the first day of school. Kind of, yeah.
She could be the bad girl.
I didn't want to tell with all the, oh, no, no, no. Even though that's always been the rule.
It'll be fine.
I love being in school. I love it.
We have a scapegoat, we can point.
I know, it is the law. It's really not our fault.
I think it was chickpea that did it first and they did like a study afterward and talked to the kids after like a year and they all reported liking that it did.
Yeah.
So like after it, there's like the follow ups with kids that then positive.
Yeah, I read that.
They have to get through that and it is addictive, so it is going to feel very uncomfortable for, especially after summertime. You know, they've all, I'm sure screen time is up for most, so it's, the first couple weeks are gonna grow in pains.
They'll get there. So we need a motion to accept this.
Policy JICJ.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I guess I have to second it.
No other option, Kayla. Any more discussion on it? No questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
The three other, thank you. The three other hot burner items we'll come to in September, and that's policy AB, which is the parental bill of rights, which is eye popping. BEDG, which is meeting minutes and changing how meetings are recorded and shared. And then EHAG, use of generative artificial intelligence. Or A1 is our education.
Yeah, right, yes.
We were able to get out to the big city with a bunch of people from here and Winchester to go to Title IX training. We went to Manchester back in, on July 31st. And really, as it says here, obviously, we want to stay up to speed on what it means to be an investigator or a decision maker or the Title IX coordinator, understand the rules around the investigation process. These are the same rules from 2020 that then got changed by the Biden administration in 2024 that got changed back by the Trump administration in 2025. So a lot of us were already knowledgeable of it, but some were and we all could always use the refresher. The other piece is, we always want to protect the districts from any liability. So we always want to be training, we want to be in the know. We have to post any of our training materials on our website under our Title IX section, which we have. And so we just like to, you know, stay in compliance and the board to know that we are all set in that area. CPI or nonviolent crisis intervention instructor training. Sam Killily and I participated in that for three hours. It was a lot of fun participating in that with Sam. It was a 25 hour course. And we learned a lot about, obviously, nonverbal de-escalation techniques with students, how to disengage when students grab or hold you, but also how to safely restrain students for the safety of them, others and yourself. So we'll be working on a CPI schedule so that all staff members will have verbal de-escalation technique training. Many will get the disengagement and some will get the restraint training. And so that, again, is, is another layer of protection against liability claims for any injuries caused by students who are just unable to de-escalate or put them in a safe, unsafe. So restraint. If we're tired, it's because we just got back from senior leadership retreat. We went up to Plymouth on Sunday. We use an extension of our sunny side work using the grant funding from that program. We spent two and a half days, or two days, total of two days, working together on building our team, continuing to develop our collaborative approach to leadership on campus. Having some good conversations about what learner or student agency is and what it is not. And then really digging into the strategic planning process, which we today finished, we needed more time, so we met, started a meeting today for to wrap up that work. It's not ready for prime time yet. We're now at the stage where each of us has all four documents with strategies. We're gonna look for redundancies. It's gonna become one doc and we'll have it to be able to send out in a couple of weeks. I asked for two weeks' time. And so we'll be able to try and dig that out to the board prior to September. That may mean us calling another SLT meeting. Originally, I think we talked about our the second one of September, and I think that falls after the board meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah, we just went, huh, that's a little change.
Yeah, so no, we're not gonna have it for you by the board meeting.
It's fine.
Because we both were like.
No, I just, I just remembered we said, oh, no, we're gonna do the second SLT meeting. But as soon as that's ready, we'll get it to the board. It's almost there. And then they will have Sean graphically design it.
Yay, sweet.
But I think you'll be pleased with, and I'll send some drafts to you so you can see the work that you've done. Working on the school board handbook, some of the other activities that have been going on helped kind of pushed it aside a little bit. I talked with April a little bit about what is in there and some of the work that we're doing. And so it won't take very long. We finished that off for draft. That will absolutely be here by then. And so we'll do final approvals on that and start rolling that out in plenty of time for the work we want to do for the course of next year. I think I've shared office renovations and spaces with you. That's working out quite nicely. See, things seem to fit really well. I think it was a brilliant idea to have some of the technology staff spend some time over the elementary schools, make it accessible and usable. Try and create that visibility in both schools. Really working hard to eliminate that feeling that it's two different places. But we want to be one, one school district. And so by spreading some of that love, spreading the work around, I think it's gonna at least be a step forward. So still lots to do. Back to school Monday nights, district convocation on the 25th. Schools on the 20th Thursday. So.
It's coming up quick.
It's funny because some things get completed between this district and Winchester, so it's a little double trouble.
When do they go back?
Twenty seven.
Oh, the day before.
We are, we have a retreat next Tuesday. RPD, teacher orientation.
I liked, I wanted to say I like the whole meet the staff posts you did over in Winchester. I like that.
I give all of that credit to Megan, the principal.
Yeah, it was nice.
She really wanted to do something different this year to go for it.
Yeah, it was nice to see them in like relaxed pictures, like, you know, we're not so like school pictures, you know what I mean, like.
I know what my wife was.
Right, yes. It's very pretty.
No, she's.
No, she's in the picture with him.
Cute.
Yeah.
Yeah, she makes it nice.
She makes him look good. Well, thank you, Dr. Ryan. Is there any questions for Dr. Ryan?
That was a lot of information.
Yes. Business administrators report, Mrs. Forth.
Well, to follow up on Dr. Ryan's, everybody did have pretty good stats reports, except for me.
Short and sweet.
So I just blew it up on my screen to make your picture.
So fill the whole page.
Double space.
She put the font to 14.
Essentially, we're, we're closing down 24, 25 books. I have to be honest, I have not in the last week and a half been able to touch any of that. Obviously, I have to get state reports in by September 1st, so we'll be pulling a weekend or two between now and the end. It's just, just my everyday stuff. So this is like finding time in addition to, so that's kind of why it's pretty short. Operating budgets, with the exception of the elementary school, are all out into the hands of the administration. Justin has his all done, by the way. And I can see him and working on it. And the reason the elementary school is behind is Gretchen Higgins, our accountant, is going to be working with Molly on that. I'm starting to train Gretchen in how to do budget development, so she's gonna work with Molly on that. So it's sitting down with her, going through, we've kind of gone through things, so she'll be reaching out to Molly and they're gonna develop that, that budget together because it's good to have someone beside me that, that understands at least the creation of it and where it goes from there. And Gretchen's an important piece of the business office, so. And then, again, just financial, the DOE 25, the MS 25, the MS 24, and all those added documents that the state keeps adding to every year. Well, I'll be in hopefully by the first of September, yes, September. I would ask that, you're probably gonna see an email from me before, like right towards the end of the month, saying, can you guys come sign? It's just signed in that cover page and obviously I'll send you the documents in a little time. Later tonight, I am gonna ask under new business. I did want to bring up the lease because we did talk about that at the last meeting for the lighting project. I did get the information on that. And hopefully, when he gives his report, he does have some news regarding the lighting project. And then I also have the bids for fuel. So I, I have to give a lot of thanks to Catherine Lynch at the town. We've reached out and she went out and got the bids, includes us with it. And I believe the select board passed that Monday night. And so I did let her know we would be bringing it up tonight. So I do have those more of those as well.
Do we have enough budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yay.
Don't, don't tell Wayne.
Okay. I know, he just kept chopping it and when you said that, I was like, oh, no.
So I will have that later.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any questions for Jane?
Yeah, to the point, yes.
Director of Academics and Career Leadership, Mrs. Thompson.
Madam Jane, you have my report. I would like to just showcase that this is what our portrait visual looks like.
Oh, that's awesome. I love it. Yeah, I like that.
We changed just a little bit, but a different book. So that was the only change we made to it. We won't print on gray t-shirts again because you really can't see that well, but that is what the final visual will be like. And as I wrote my report, you'll see this all over town very soon. We'll have yard signs for businesses to put up. We're looking at hopefully being able to put up signs along between the two schools on posts, like this, like the graduate up that has that on it. So when you enter, you'll see that as you come in. We'll have a lot of link, if you will, that the grant is helping support to kick it off for us. So we'll be doing a lot, we'll be on a big kickoff on our district day with the staff and then really starting to embed it in our classrooms. And also, I also wrote my report, the October 3rd career, alumni career fair. I need your help and I need anybody that's willing to come and set up, that has a career in this area would be great. But also for you guys who know the people better than I to tap people on it. We have probably about 11 people have reached out so far saying they're interested, so we're sending them information. But if anybody would like to tap people on the shoulder and say, you should go and do that, that would be helpful to me.
And what time do people, what time is the shindig and what time?
It's nine to 12, so. It's nine to twelve, so in the morning. So it'll be open to six through twelve, right? We will cycle our kids through, just like a career fair. Um, what I've said in the letter to people is if you are recruiting, like some people are coming because they want GS precision, who has people that worked here, that lived at school here, would like to come to recruit kids. So they'll have a table that will have applications and stuff. Other people will just come to share what their career is. We just, and for me, that's what's most important. I really feel like what we want is our kids to be exposed to anything that graduates from Hinsdale have done. Um, and I I say it doesn't have to be something that you had to go to college for. Matter of fact, on the contrary, you know, the more of that, the better. So uh they can just set up a table. And I have a letter. If they just email me, I'll send out all that information to them. Um, and the email address, Justin was gracious enough to set up with our own email for career fair, so. We'll be responding to that and, you know, we'd like to pack the gym with as many alumni as we can. Um, I did have a couple of people who say, I I I'm not an alumni, but I've lived in Hinsdale for a long time and I'd love to come share. I'm not gonna say no.
Right.
Right? So that's a community connection, right? So let's let them come. Um, so anybody that you can reach out to and that you know, like, I'd love to get people from the town. Anything like that here. So um, I I guess I'm saying help.
Is it, is it possible to get a list so we don't ask people that are already coming?
I'll send you the list so far. And also, um, someone had uh given me a list of people, potential people to reach out to that I can reach out to some that you guys might know them. So I'll email that with you guys, so you can see maybe even adapt and add to it.
Do you have an electrician yet?
We do not.
Cause I have one who went through the Brattaburl program and it's now Cooper Sherwin.
Oh, absolutely.
And he'll be great with the kids.
And if they're asking about what does the day that, that lots of questions about what do I have to do that day?
Yep.
Come and bring, I said, any sort of stuff you can give to the kids is great if you want to.
Yeah.
But um, we'll prep the kids also in advisory with what questions to ask. I think we'll play a little game like a passport. The more places they go, the snacks they get, the prizes and things like that.
Is it possible to do an announcement at the all reunion on Saturday?
That would be a good idea.
Oh, yeah. Maybe print out a flyer and a flyer could be up there.
There's an all-class reunion. Graduates on Saturday.
If I send her the information.
Yeah.
That she can maybe share out.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
And I could, I could probably come too. We're heading to the White Mountains that day, but not leaving till like noon, so. I have the day off.
That would be great, so. Thank you.
You go between the Elvis and Chris, maybe.
Parker has the, he should have the day off as well, so he could, and he's working for Cushing and Sons now, so he he could.
Perfect, that'd be great.
Yeah, he could probably come too. He probably did. That's your house?
Oh, no.
All right. It's pretty cool.
So I had a question about the Department of Labor stuff.
Yeah.
Does the, do our current certified businesses have to recertify? Okay.
Have to re-cert and re-prove every.
Every year, okay.
And the process is very different. So um, Paul can, Paul is gonna help me because it's a twenty thousand step process now. Let's make it way more difficult than it used to be when it was working just fine. But anyways, I don't, I don't know what that's all about. The only thing I will tell you is I think this is gonna allow more businesses to be approved.
Okay.
Perhaps it digs a little bit deeper, so they were, they were knowing a lot of people. No, 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 just. This might allow them to look a little deeper and say yes, I hope. So that's the only reason I can think of doing it, but there is gonna be a little bit of.
And the teacher orientation?
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, please join us. Noon for lunch. Twelve to one. We'd love to have you come and be here if you'd like to. We will be introducing our new staff and follow the district staff to them at that point.
I can be here for that.
That is August twentieth?
Yeah.
This next Wednesday.
That's the day before I have to do my own orientations.
Wayne and I will be in Maine.
I'll be there. Do you do anything but go on vacation? Going to the White Mountains, going to Maine, just got back from Virginia. All right, any other questions? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Principals report. We'll start with Anna.
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. Um, I would say the things I want to highlight, uh, what I'm most excited about are first, our school. Got a grant from the Hope Fund that helping support a motivational speaker. And we had some left after that. So we bought some new activities that I'm very excited about. Um, and um, I got a lot of positive feedback about that throughout the year from the kids, so I'm excited to be able to write that back. Um, and then transition, I have been working with Karen and Dr. Ryan on a transition plan for the eighth graders coming from Winchester. And I have a meeting scheduled with Megan Fulea on Monday to share with her my ideas. And um, you know, I just let her know that I'm really hoping to collaborate with her. She's gonna be the Winchester expert on the parents and the families there. Um, that will work together to hopefully have, um, what we have sketched out is a monthly event. Um, starting in September, bring the kids together and and the parents some of the time. Um, and really let them build relationships and get to know each other before the kids come here. Um, and then less exciting, but also important. Jeanne and Karen and I went to a workshop regarding the updated three oh six rule. And um, you're gonna be hearing about that a lot, because there are some um important changes that we're gonna have to implement, starting with next year's freshmen, including changes to um graduation requirements. So we have some background work to do in terms of looking at policies that might be impacted by this. Um, and we'll put together something to bring the board when, you know, when we have it. Your, your input or your approval of something. So a lot of work behind the scenes that will go on with that. And I have any questions?
Anybody have any? No, I'm just excited about all the stuff you're doing to welcome Winchester. Like, what did you get?
Probably ninth grade ambassadors to help, you know, be a a voice to the eighth graders of like, this is what's different. What high school is like here, so. Um, when they've had some experience under their belt as ninth graders, I'll be asking them to to speak with eighth grader students.
Nice. Thank you. Dr. Bremner.
Some are learning, which is great. We, none of us ever, ever stop. So uh, I was able to bring back, um, as well as uh Mr. Punt's, um, brought back information around school safety to complete the safety work that Dr. Ryan is um, really, you know, making sure is a priority in in Hinsdale. Um, this is outside my background, outside my everything. Um, and so it was a very heavy and very fast. It was Wednesday, Friday, same as. Um, so, um, but I, it was, it was heavy. So like the, the first panel was, uh, had the principal from Columbine. Um, he stayed for over fifteen more years. So, but we were able to bring back not only preventative things or deepening preventive things, but also um, just readiness in the worst case kind of knowledge, which I, I don't think I've ever had. That, that part's never really been talked about. Um, it was heavy, but it was, it was very worthwhile. That was through the whole um uh, grant. And then um, July, I backed out, um, as far as I could go. Um, I, but I, going to the Principals United Conference in Seattle was amazing. So I really appreciate um, everybody, including all of you, supporting our, our professional growth. Um, uh, it's really important. It really will help um, drive what um, we're going for over at the elementary school. Um, and then all of the teachers have been doing all sorts of work. Um, so they're just gonna group with MTS treating and science. Um, and then I, I, the Sarahs, as now I can say all the tax, the Sarah. Uh, so Sarah Donahue and Sarah Burgess and Annabasset, um, they're joining me um, in a, a leadership committee, a new structure over at the elementary school. Um, and anchored in, in multi-tier support. We're, we're locking in on Monday. I'm not available on Monday. We are, we're spending the day, uh, really diving in and recreating and articulating and planning out um pieces of our system that need uh updating. Um, pre-K, hey, we're still good. I know it's been like a worry, um, but the numbers are are still solid. Our communities are still tiny. Um, so, I mean, a whole herd could come out next week, I understand that, but um, we only have, we have twenty-six enrolled. So that's two small classrooms, so that decision uh holds still. Um, but our preschool is massively full. Um, so that decision also holds. So um, we have uh ten, uh, in the morning, nine in the afternoon for our three-year-olds. And we always hold a couple of spots open anyways, um, for early intervention referrals. Um, which there uh is possibly up to seven. Um, uh, it's been the, the number that Riley shared out. Um, and then our four-year-old program is at fifteen. That's a lot. Uh, you guys are big, you know how many little people. Um, so uh, Ms. Puchel has set up her classroom. She's uh, she's very excited for it. Uh, she's been doing more work with um, Miss Taggart and I, the kindergarten teachers and her will work on, um, their co-teaching models that they're gonna work on when she's um, co-teaching math with them. Hiring, we're not full, but um, so I think you guys are aware of our needs there. Uh, we are having an open house event. I just, there was, um, I'm gonna send out our mind out tomorrow because there was some feedback. People were confused if the eighteenth was open house versus not. Um, so I tried to clarify that they will meet their teachers at open house, which is going to be Tuesday. Uh, it'll be five, the Tuesday of the week, school's open. Five o'clock for us, six o'clock for sixth graders, right? So same as we did last year, the same night, um, which families seem like they could just go from one to the other. As there is going to be an open house. Any questions?
No, we're good. Thank you very much.
I was gonna ask the date for open house and you said it.
All right, where we are. IT Director, Justin.
Madam Chair, you have my board report. Uh, just like to say how nice it is to have a fully staff department again. Daisy's been great, getting, getting to know some of our staff that have already been here this summer, meeting with people last spring, part when she was working part-time. And I think we're gonna have a really good tool to use to help support our students, our staff with the use of the technology that we've provided for years. I mentioned Drew Cooper is, has moved from being a custodian over to technical support specialist. He's zipping right through things. It's great. Um, he's image all laptops we purchased with last year's funds. I purchased late in the spring. And then we're hopeful that the shipment comes in on time tomorrow with what we purchased with this year's funds to hit the target of providing new laptops for everyone six to twelve.
Yeah, that's incredible. When I saw it, I was like, what?
It was timing two batches rather than purchasing last, last summer and this summer. Just put it off and waited so we'd get a huge, a bunch of them. Our order for this year is backordered for several weeks of summer, but it's on a truck. It's supposed to be here tomorrow. Let's see. Everything else we've done this summer has been to try to address issues that came up in the last year or two around teachers hesitation for using technology in the classroom, whether it's students coming with devices that weren't working or weren't prepared, such as not being charged. You know, that's really where our focus has been, is making sure that our students will have working devices in their hands. Come to their school and hopefully the teachers will have less stress and anxiety around using those. And then having the support of Daisy will be huge too.
Yeah, charging things are very cool. That will be super helpful, rather than having kids trying to plug in and it's dead and. Yeah, I like the whole, uh, taking them out like a library book. Yeah, that's. That was a good, good idea.
Do you have any other questions? Happy, happy to answer them.
Anybody have any? No, it's just exciting. And the smart boards, those sound very cool. Yeah. So you'll have two classrooms with the new.
Two science classrooms and the middle school. So, so we're gonna get those done, play around with the brackets today. Hopefully, next couple of days, I'll get them done.
Sweet. And then you'll phase the other ones in as needed or?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple that are high priorities right now. They have really old projectors that are barely working or um, they're just not in a good location in the classroom. So it's a good time to move them to a wall that makes more sense. And then from there, we'll utilize the other ones as we need them.
Sweet. Thanks, Justin. Director of Student Services.
Madam Chair, other board members, you have my report. Um, one of the things that I want to, you know, the numbers, um, as you can see, numbers are increasing and also the, the disability areas, which are most intensive, are increasing. Just as an overall picture, um, so we're seeing more intensive needs um throughout the whole district. Um, and then, you know, we had a very successful E S Y program uh for elementary school, middle school and high school. Um, and then, you know, I, my proposal, um, that I have is to eliminate the word. Um, the, I, I actually, I hate to even say it, but hate, but to eliminate the word sped. Um, it, in my opinion, it is um derogatory. It's and that I have, you know, it's, it's offensive and how some people have used, have used that term. Um, I'd much rather use it, you know, have, have it special ed, students with a disability, and identify it as a student. Um, what I'd like to propose is that that term be eliminated from Hinsdale. Um, that includes budget reports, that includes any other type of reports that come out. Um, for me personally, if I hear it, I will confront person. I will confront them with, you know, we, we're using the word specialized, where, you know, and um, I, and then I would like to share this out, share this part of the proposal out to all staff, um, throughout Hinsdale. So um, I guess that's what I would, because that's my opinion. So that's why I would like to get your approval of doing this.
Bro, I wrote next to my little notes, says, love this. So. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, if you go to school for education, that's what you learn anyways, person first, um.
That's exactly it, yep.
It's a good norm to have.
I'll commend Patty on bringing this forward. She asked, originally when she wrote this, kind of, what do you think? And uh, I agree with her. Yeah, I don't use the term, so it's not, um, for some, it may be difficult, because it may not be thought of as something that's derogatory to buy them. So it'd just be some acculturation. Just when Rose's Law came out, it took a long time for that to take effect as well, but we were constantly reminding folks um, that that's no longer a word that's acceptable. Um, so I, I supported it, said absolutely. Uh, included in your report. I told her, I think I would be really disappointed if you didn't. So I'm glad that she's brought it to you today. It doesn't need a vote, but just more, I just want you to be aware. Yes. Perspective, that would be super helpful.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And I think a lot of people is just like an abbreviation. And haters love abbreviations. So it is just that learning aspect, because it has been used in a negative way. So I love that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Karen? All right, thank you very much. Uh, Facilities Director, me.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. Um, so just one thing in here, it's a little bit different. As I said, that probably by now, we have majority of our rubber mulch in the playground pulled out. We've actually, so I was able to get some volunteer, local volunteers to help me over the last two days. So we were able to actually complete the, getting rid of all the rubber mulch out of both areas and replacing it. So now it's, it's all wood chips in there now. The last thing I need to do is get some uh, replacement material for around the border that got mixed so bad that it's just, I can't do anything with it.
Yeah.
But it's, right now, it's, 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 it's pretty complete. But it's, right now, it's, it's, it's pretty complete. Then that, that was a lot, a lot more work. Like, there was a lot of work. I mean, I mean, you saw me out there that one day where we're all out there and it was shovels and like wheelbarrows and stuff. It was.
And it was not, you would think that you'd come in, it'd be an easy.
Oh, no, that stuff is not easy to move.
Poor guy, I don't know who that guy was. And but when you and I were chatting for that, less than two minutes, you would think that he could have got ten shovels, right? He could not because he goes in and it like instantly stops him from the rubber. That's not shuvable. So he's like. It was awful. I felt so bad. No, I'm like, oh. My hand, my hand.
Yeah, I mean, we tried our best to do as much as we could with the equipment we had. And then the town, Wayne came up on Friday and had the, the bucket loader was able to dump a lot with that. I mean, it, the heavy equipment made a huge difference for us. We did as best as we could with what we had, but it makes a big difference. We got it done. It, it was a lot of work, but it's.
Yeah, working around kids, number one, you know, during day camp.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Kids back and forth and the kids are separated, but yet they're still.
Yeah.
And they're curious, like.
Oh, yeah, I gotta ask, what are you doing?
How long are you gonna be here?
Forever.
Yeah, I had one person say that they didn't like the, they didn't like the wood chips they wanted the rubber mulch back. And you're gonna tell their parents.
So be prepared.
But.
I felt bad. You guys did a great job. It looks good. I'm so glad that my kitchen and clothes aren't going to be destroyed anymore.
Yeah.
And our carpets.
Yeah, I know. Would they just have this like black layer and little kids putting it in their mouth? It's.
Grace's sneakers are.
Yeah, they're black.
Destroyed the second. And that's like when I'm school shopping first, I want these like, no.
Yeah, no.
Looks great. You guys did great.
Thank you. It was, it was a lot of work. It was, but it's, it's so much better. It's gonna be so much better than what it was.
It also saved his guys' work because he had to do a whole new protocol for the rugs this year to clean them.
Oh, geez. Yeah, because they do get so gross.
The rubber just, it just, it was, it, it was past its lifespan. So it was just starting to break down. Yeah. So, yep. So that's pretty much the wood chip portion of it's finished as of today. So the last thing is I just got to get some material for the border piece, but that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be so bad. And besides that, you have any other questions on my report?
No, the front of the building looks beautiful as well. Looks great pulling in. Looks so good. Looks fresh. Looks good.
Yep, David, David's been out there a lot.
I saw that too, when I was dropping off in the morning. You guys did a good job.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, especially in the seat. That's miserable. So.
And I'll add, Mr. Corn, Corn Castle and the work he did in the quad, the quad courtyard.
I'm like, where did we get a quad? You're a little too schmancy for down here, right?
I'm not the one going to the white moon.
Get Mr. Thurston.
He's tamed it. You should take a look.
Yep.
I love that they have a.
We're actually starting to make some, uh, we're starting to work our way into making the soccer field game ready. We, we leave it so long because it, I mean, it's, it's, it's been so hot with no rain. It's just. I mean, we've had sprinklers going nonstop for almost two weeks out there. And it's just what it is, unfortunately. So we're gonna do the best we can, but soccer season starts, practice starts on.
Next week.
Monday. So, yeah. And I believe the one thing that Jane wanted me to give you an update on that is not in my report is for the for the proposal that we got from Affinity, they came up with a estimated incentive that we were going to get from EverSource, which was figured at eighty-nine thousand dollars. So when they had a, because it had been so long when I first got the initial one, they had to resubmit some paperwork to EverSource. When I got that, when I got that incentive back, that number went from eighty-nine thousand is what was estimated. The actual real number we're going to get incentive money is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Yes. Immediately wrote back and I said, are you sure this is right? And they said, nope, we checked EverSource. It is what this is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars incentive money for that. That's a big deal for, for the, just knocking down the years up there and that office, it's a big deal. So.
That's sweet. That's incredible. Well, that makes it way more enticing.
Right? So how many years now is it?
I have not looked into it that far. I was thinking that the way that I think I calculated was somewhere around like forty thousand dollars a year is what we were going to pay on that. So if we're gonna boost that, it's gonna take like a year and a half off of that number that we originally got.
What did we say? Eight? I think we were around eight.
Eight, nine, somewhere in there. So it's more gonna be like probably in the seven and a half or six, six and a half, seven.
Closer to seven.
That's what I'm hoping. But I mean, obviously there's a lot of factors with that, but I mean, that, that amount of money is really gonna cut down on that. So I was very surprised when I saw that number. I'm guessing it's just because they just got, and you know, maybe it's a rolling over of a new year and they've got that much more money to hand out. And we were one of the first ones. It could have been that. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, that never happens. Money doesn't ever go up. When it's coming to us, we want it going out.
Not usually. Love that. So that's awesome. And did, do you have the numbers on the fuel?
You mean.
Oh, she's doing that for other business.
I, I always want to add, it's on my report because it was really coming together, but all the supplies that you see in the backpacks, um, that is a result of a lot of hard work from Jane. A lot of the, a lot of it is, was also purchased by her own money. That she was able to pull in different, like cash back and Kohl's Cash and Amazon. And the way she dug into the deals that she could get and the volume of deals for, like the Crayola is in the snacks. You know, and, and, you know, she, you know, she and Karen, I asked Karen to help with the backpack purchase. So the two of them were like a dynamic duo and putting all of this together for us. Because it's one thing to be, you know, dreaming about it and wanting it to happen and talking about it. It's a whole nother kettle of fish to actually make it happen. So, and I, I know that she's not, I don't know where, where she went. I wanted to make sure that the board understands that a lot of this really was, was Jane's handiwork at being able to budget shop and we have more than enough funding for this year's event. And, and you know, Karen's hard work as well. And then, you know, everybody on the committee, but really, I think Jane really kind of stuck it under her wing.
We're spending money. I'm gonna do it.
A dollar.
Like nobody else.
She spent her time shopping instead of doing.
I still won't think you have any problem with the results.
Especially because I feel like it was like a month ago, this was, you're like, so we have a great idea. And, but it's just an idea right now and some rough plans. And then we come back to all of this. So that is very impressive.
Can I just add for the record that O S T C P helped pay for this? I think it's important.
Yes, a hundred percent. Yes, thank you.
People with events like to hear. And so I just want to, not much of it, but we did.
But commitment to it, title one.
We were able to, um, I look, and, and part of that was also O S T C P. There, there'd been set aside money in Title One for some evening events that happened during the year. But O S T C P ended up like a combo. So we realized what was left in reality that and adjusted it.
And lots of community donations too.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a whole.
Erica's worked hard on it and the donations from friends of the campus. If I left anything out, please, because everybody really deserves, you know, huge kudos. It's our first one. We don't know how it's gonna go, but we think it's great.
Yeah, it sounds like it's gonna be awesome.
That's right.
Well, that's right.
That's right.
Sounds like a great community event.
Yeah, knowing how much work gets put into any kind of event. I mean, I applaud all of you for doing it. It's not, it's not just like, oh, we're gonna do this and then it just magically happens. So.
And you never know how many people are gonna come. So trying to figure everything out and.
And we didn't know we were gonna have to deal with no federal grants or.
In the middle of it.
Any other issues that may have popped up. Yeah, just we had a great team and people really care. So that's, that's a combination.
And over the summer, I know. Yeah, that was good. Thank you, everyone.
Now we have to do it every year.
That's true. Pretty much it is. You have to keep going.
And that's your prize for doing the job well.
You get to do it again. And you have to make it fun. But you'll have to add something exciting every year too.
I would challenge accepted. Next year we have the principal sing and dance.
There we go.
There, I love that.
We'll just put them in junk tanks or something.
Oh, we do love a junk tank.
It was like, no.
Really?
That was why I got hide in the face a hundred and ninety times.
Karen wanted me to have a junk tank on the first day of school.
It's like, I have to be here for the rest of the day.
All right. Uh, thank you, Nate. Um, school board retreat and goal setting. We need to reset. We need to reschedule that from tomorrow.
It actually works great for me.
So I appreciate that. That's probably fine.
I find it to be a nuisance. We'll probably be on vacation when.
That's probably true.
So I was thinking we go into September.
Yeah, I was thinking about Monday, the fifteenth.
I've got nothing.
Now where we could take advantage of either the Arlington Inn or if she would open for just us.
I was gonna say, it's not.
Or we do a one.
We could do a one, yeah.
Don't have anything written in.
Want to be more date specific.
Got a small retreat, right?
What time are we saying? Five?
Five? Yeah, is that good for everybody?
For me. Does it work for you guys?
We'd be hungry five.
Yeah, I might be like.
Be hungry five oh five?
Not having the soccer schedule isn't ideal, but.
Yeah, I don't have that either. Although I do know that they're, well, I don't, the boys' schedule anyway, they're up north. Their first game is up north.
Okay, there we go.
All right. So, so place to be determined. Okay. Let me write that down. So we can message Mark and.
I was gonna say, I don't have anything in my calendar, but I don't even have a school board meeting right now. So there's a solid chance I'm missing some.
You can just add it to your skylight.
I just looked at my skylight, but I haven't done September yet.
Okay, I had to write myself a note to message those guys or I'll forget. All right. So that's done. School board handbook. Do we need to talk about it anymore? We kind of talked about it.
Uh, it's in my report. It kind of shares the update of where we are. Yeah, I, I'd like to get that done. It's got some pretty logical stuff to just cut.
Uh, student handbook updates. We need to approve the handbooks?
Um, you did last year. We had, we'd had a conversation.
I think we generally do.
The history was you approving them. And so we included them for approval.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the student handbooks for the elementary school and the middle high school.
Question. Why do you say the history? Is that because we don't actually have to approve them?
No, because the policies that are in there have already been approved by the board. The operations of the school rests on the, my staff, the, the staff that works with the superintendent. So in technical terms, there isn't a need to approve them. And so some districts don't. Uh, but here at Hinsdale, the board has in previous year, it's probably a good idea just to stick with that traditional practice. Yeah, it's up to the board.
So I need a motion to approve the elementary and middle high school. I'll make that motion. Second?
I might second it. Thanks.
Any questions on either one of them?
No, I loved how informative they are. I feel like all the questions that families traditionally have are, they're just in there now. I was like, ooh.
I know.
They're pretty clear.
So clear.
Not gonna be like, well.
Right. This is what it is.
Yeah.
Everything. I was like, ooh, I'm taking screenshots of everything so I can remember all the things. I already saved it to my computer. I'm excited. Thank you. So informative.
All right. So all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Fun balance. Have a fun balance.
You want an update on that? I did say it's been a couple of weeks since I've had to look at it, right?
Yes.
Um, if I were betting person, which I'm not.
Well, it says, it says fun balance vote. So did we need to vote on something?
Oh, is there?
That's why I'm asking.
Oh, my gosh. Yes. Oh, my God. I thought we were looking for a fun balance. Thank you, Maria.
Sorry.
I think we're gonna have to have this happen. Okay. I'm glad you're here, Maria.
I feel like we say that at least.
I know.
Thanks, Maria.
So last year, we retained fifty thousand. And as you know, that we did not spend it. It went right back to the taxpayer or will when we go through this whole process. Um, this year we've had, I'm gonna be very honest, some post-budget and budget posting increases that were unforeseen. We're in the right trend. I did just update senior leadership that, you know, here's, here's the March of Vote. Here's the budget where we posted because, you know, we had, we had known staffing changes or contract changes or even things such as going through, I'll give a specific example, working with the Riddleboro School District. We only had enough funding for three to four kids to go to the program. And Karen said, can't we do more? And as I told senior leadership, I never say no to the kids. If it's for the kids.
Especially for, like, that's direct education.
I get to do that affects that, but this I can do. So that's one of those post-budget approval changes. So that's in there. And we kind of move things around a little bit to make that happen. We did. And some of it's a little hard, but we have to thank Anna and her reorganization for basically allowing some kids, more kids to get to go to W R C C, which really helps. But when you could start going through everything, you, you start and it's like, oh, okay, this person might have only been a single or an opt-out. And now I have family plan. So there's all sorts of things. So those will go up and down. And so when I reported out to the leadership team, I'm like, okay, here's where we were in June. Now here's where we are. And we're, we're in a downward cost trend, which is good. That's, that's the way we want to go, but we're still not there yet. Do I think we'll get there? Absolutely. Um, but I would like to seek a higher amount than fifty thousand.
And for next year, that's a good idea.
And, and again, I hope, and I, I don't think we'll need to spend it, but having all the most, you know, unexpected things happen or things we're not thinking about. Uh, another, for instance, was Anna has NEAS. She upfront during a budget process said, you know, we have to pay these NEAS costs. Got taken out. We still have to pay the NEAS costs. So there's another example. So I don't know how much you guys would be willing to do.
On my friend's behalf, the squeeze that we got as a result of the budget process, we're not faking it. We feel it. It's tight.
I think in the long run, we're gonna just, especially in light, I will tell you, like our fun balance on return this year, I think we'll see five hundred thousand, if not six hundred thousand. But again, I have not got much money. And we were literally still paying some bills last week. So I just keep running reports going, stop, stop, stop. Um, so I would like to seek at least a hundred. You have an appetite for more? I would love it. I thought you were gonna say like. Eight hundred? I don't know. Yeah, I think that's what I.
I know. I was like, oh, at least a hundred. Okay.
And then we're gonna go in increments of like fifteen.
And then we're gonna go in increments of like fifteen. You did this on purpose.
I know.
Explain why we have some of these increases.
Yeah, well, and I think the scare we just had is why I'm feeling more inclined to say we should have a little bit of backup. Because we were, you know, middle of the summer and potentially finding out our budget was missing a giant. Chunk, so, and I just feel like with things the way they are right now, I don't feel totally. Oh, and I meant to ask Patty, in your report, there was a comment about not getting the allocation.
Yeah, we got them today.
Okay, I was like, that's a lot of money.
We got her report, July thirtieth, and it was like, right after that, we realized, we heard that they were gonna be released.
Yeah, so like Patty and everyone else has to say. I can only budget for this much right now, even if it's crazy. Having to double do things.
Yes.
Um, but yeah, and so the net effect would be fifty thousand, because we have the fifty thousand that we retained last year coming back. And if we retain a hundred thousand, it would be an additional fifty thousand.
You just be carrying that fifty thousand.
Right, and again, it will be.
Right, yeah, just to save. And then if we don't need it at the end of next year, it goes all the way back.
Which I fully intend to, and Dr. Ryan and I are really in hopes of not needing to touch the trust funds either, because I know we have those.
Right, but.
But they're really modest, right?
I know, we've, you know.
Point that are ready for distribution, too small.
Yeah.
Do we have to vote on it tonight, or can we do it when the other two are back? I need to tonight, the only reason being is in my, um, D O E twenty five, I have to note the retention, retention of funds. Um, in fact, I just got the fundraiser calculator like, no, we just last week, um, as far as that. Because they send it out to you based on district, saying, here's what your net assessed value is, and here's what your three or five percent retained maximum could be. And how much, what did you say that we have that we're giving back?
We have fifty, but we would retain it.
What, what, what right now, at the end of our budget right now, do we have leftover right now? I'm thinking between five fifty and six hundred. That's where it's hard, because you're giving us back inside what we might need it, but as you know, we, we did a very fine line.
Yeah.
This last year, we rolled the dice on quite a few things.
Right.
It's more about what's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the unknown of some of the things. Your future.
Right.
But sending the money back was from then.
Yeah. Yeah, I definitely, with the way things are, I do.
If you wanna think about it and come back at the end of the meeting, that's fine, um, because I know I'm just bringing this on you, but it's just one of those things that. Literally, we just talked about it for the retreat, um, and I had done a scenario for the senior leadership, so that they were aware. I would be sitting here like totally and, and shaking if I were really, really worried.
Yes.
He's afraid to come to me with any cause, I know.
I wouldn't want to.
Do we wanna make a motion to hold a vote until at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I think.
Are you two ready to vote?
I am, but.
I feel pretty comfortable, because we're only taking another, like, we're not giving fifty back, but we're only taking another fifty. And I don't think anybody in town feels like things are super secure with finances right now. Everybody was worried, especially in New Hampshire, because, you know, it's property.
And if we don't need it, it goes back, so, and that's my thought process on it, so.
Yeah, I have pearls, my perspective on it.
Sure.
Taxpayer town.
Yeah.
Um, it's money that's already been voted by the people to be expended for the school, or just asking for it to be a safety net for this school year.
Right.
Um, it's not additional money that, it's a surprise. It's already been agreed upon. I think many people be in support of that rather than us bringing to an issue in the spring and asking for, or. A special meeting.
I was ready to vote as well.
Okay, then we can.
Yeah.
So I just, um.
I'll make a motion to approve, do I say retaining fifty thousand?
Um, it would have to be the full one. Fifty's coming back.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we retain a hundred thousand dollars from this year's budget.
What is it called?
I know, it's like it's fun balance.
It's called, uh, retain.
But it's the F Y twenty five.
Right.
Yes, so you're retaining it from F Y twenty five to, to have.
Which is this. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I honestly don't intend to use it.
Right.
Oh yeah, July, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so Maria, you got that? So F Y twenty five. From then.
Do you have to say four twenty six or no? Okay, that's from twenty.
Definition of retainage.
The state just wants you guys to acknowledge that.
That we're keeping, that we, that we know what we're doing.
If we're keeping it.
Alright, so you made the motion second, um, any more discussion on it? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, then I will be very.
We know you will.
Oh, we know. I might feel a little differently, but I'm like, I know Jane is like, hmm, you sure you have to spend that?
Alright, we're up to job descriptions. Do you want to go through them individually? Has anybody had a chance to read them all?
Those I browsed, everything else.
Was there anything that we should be made aware of in any of them before we?
No, these all came through file, uh, personnel committee as well, and, um, there were no issues that were brought up during personnel.
Beautiful. Do you have a question, Justin?
Just about, um. Details of one of the job description, the departments listed.
Which one?
So are they all correct?
Oh, it's listed, yeah, it's just, it's listed under information technology.
Yeah, no.
That is not the case.
No, no.
I didn't, I didn't know if that job title, like, by the state standard, fell under, I see it's also reports of principal, but.
So what should department should be under?
I, well, there's actually a double cliff. The next is her role as reading specialist, reading specialist is paid under the local budget, not Title One. Whereas the M T S S is under the curriculum and Title One, so M T S S should be curriculum slash Title One. But then, the reading specialist, or reading, or you know.
The reading interventionist.
Did we not do the reading specialist side?
No.
Cause we split that role?
No. No, I'm not aware of, I'm not aware of that.
Last year, for the minimum standard.
Correct, but I thought we developed this based on that switch.
I think so.
Pretty confident in that, and then as far as the M T S S academic coordinator, definitely not reporting to Justin. Well, so it says reports principal, just, I didn't know budgetary if that had to follow in my department or not. You don't wanna fund that? Well, it'd be easy to explain it, why my.
So what department should it be under?
Curriculum.
The M T.
Department would be elementary school, right?
Yes.
So it'd report to the elementary principal?
Correct.
So the reading interventionist is right, or?
It is.
Okay. So do we wanna set, accept them as a group with the change to the M T S S school department? Anybody wanna make that motion, or do you wanna go to, do them individually and say, yes?
Can, can we do it as a group?
You can.
Okay.
Don't have anything to pull off to talk about, you can do them as, as a slate.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept them as a group, except for the change that we just discussed, which, how did we word it?
We just, with the, with the change to the multi-tiered sys- system support. As this department being curriculum, not information technology, and the elementary principal, not just principal, I guess, right? Did you get all that, Maria? She'll word it great, I know it's gonna be awesome.
No, because she didn't get it.
You don't ever make mistakes, Maria, that couldn't possibly be yours. Alright, so Kendra made the motion, we need a second.
I will second.
Uh, any more discussion on them?
So nothing is, we're not adding any jobs, right?
Just, we were going, they're going through all the job descriptions and we're getting into this new format, so this is, yeah.
Just making sure it said.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any consent? No, okay.
We're gonna continue working through more.
Alright, so now we're down to policies.
These, I feel like we already, I thought we already had these.
Renewed, these were.
Yeah. Something we have to do.
We actually did these at a policy committee meeting.
Hmm, that was a good one.
You zoomed on in, zoom, zoom, zoom.
I zoomed down and I zoomed off. It was the worst zoom, me trying to keep coming in and not coming in.
We kept you updated.
Yeah, it was a good time.
You did a nice job.
You have, you've seen A C a few times, but that's because of the whole timeline.
Okay.
The reason that changed is a result of, uh, the revision was based on timeline changes and the addition of USDA requirements.
I loved how short they all were. I know, that's true, you had a theme this month, and I really appreciated it, because the rest of them are awesome.
I don't think I need any notes on them.
Maria, I'm gonna go ahead and need my work report printed, because I can't deal with it.
I didn't get it, I wrote it on the computer and it was not a good time.
Well, and I had all my tabs pulled up, so I wouldn't run into this, and, no, it was just.
Okay.
If I do it on my phone, it's, will let me in sometimes under my personal and sometime. Under my school board.
So then you don't have permission.
Right, when it lets me in under my personal, I don't know how to log out of the personal, I don't know why it does it. But when I do it on the computer, so I had to run home and get my computer, because I started it on my computer last night, and I was trying to finish it on my phone today. I'm like, Maria, it's not that easy.
Technology.
Yeah, I ran home and grabbed my computer, I'm like, this is.
I, I did send you a email mid-afternoon with links to be able to log out, that may work on your phone as well.
Okay, well.
I thought you were having trouble from your computer, but.
No, not my computer.
Yeah, the, the links I sent you, that might work on your phone, so now your personal.
I changed my password, I guess, I couldn't. I couldn't log into my computer with the password I have.
I had to look it up in my, uh, password book. I do.
Oh wow, so I have mine, I have mine saved on here, so I still need to check and see what I changed it to, so I can get into my laptop. That's why I have this one.
Okay, so do, we wanted to accept them as a group for first reading. Okay, and so I need a motion.
Sorry, I'll make that motion to accept, um.
All the letters.
Yeah, all the letters.
You know, do we have to say our policies?
She can list. No, we're good.
Now, we can note it.
Yeah, in the minutes.
You're, you're, you're going with the consent, uh, the policy consent agenda, which includes all the policies listed.
Uh, second, thank you, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, this is just the first reading, so if there is anything, we can revisit it the next second, yeah. Alright, that brings us up to other business.
I like the towns numbers.
Yes, please.
I did just hand out the, um, Hinsdale, uh, bid proposals, again, these were received from Catherine Lynch over the town, and I just appreciate the. The legwork she did with this and working with us for it, and, um, as you can see, uh, the bids are listed. And the bid that the, uh, town approved, I'm pretty sure, because she highlighted it, is, uh, discount oil.
Yes.
And, um, again, um, the, the bid for the school district being that same amount. And following in the lowest bracket, I would seek to recommend having discount oil as our provider.
Didn't we knock down the budget to ninety?
We did, but what we do, it's kind of, actually Nate and I talked about this a little bit, because it was one of Sean's parting words. Don't do less than fifty two thousand, um, and so when, when we go out to bid, we kinda go with the fifty two thousand. However, this last year, even being a cold year, I didn't wanna tell Raymond, um, we, we came under. Even what we budgeted for this year. So, and this is, this is a, a, a good rate, but we, what happened, I can tell you, two years ago when I first got here. Um, we never made our fourth payment, because we'd already overpaid, in fact, we got a small bit back. Um, and then this last year, um, we actually, they never billed us for the second payment, so we made the first, the third, and the fourth. And the fourth wasn't a full one, I don't believe, so we again, um, didn't use the full amount.
Cause this is one twenty five.
Yeah, and so we base it on the, the one of the fifty two thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the number, um, that, because that's what I've been told, that's what I, I hope Catherine worked with, too. I think Nate and I are thinking we're gonna knock it down.
Okay, um, so I need a motion to approve the discount oil as our provider.
I'll make a motion to approve discount oil as our oil provider.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, any opposed? So moved.
For us, I, I thanked her, but just, this is a lot of work, and I appreciate that she has worked with us on this and helped us out.
Um, I just had that, the, the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegation Assembly in Concord is October fourth.
Are you going to?
I am available to go, if nobody else wants to. It's in Concord.
I'll be at work.
I, I will, it's the Saturday.
No, don't make me.
I will, I, I will gladly go. Alright, um, that's all I had for new business, anybody else have anything? Yes. No?
Um, I did want to, um, just bring up the, um, tax exempt lease that would go for eight years. Um, the first payment that they're looking for, for the current year, is thirty seven thousand, which is what is projected that we would have from our savings. So it's not an additional amount, um, that would come as part of what we've already budgeted, it was just interesting to note in looking at the numbers. Um, I think we had, I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I do know the overage, um, our electric was like ninety six thousand budgeted, and it came to ninety six, six oh. Pretty close, pretty close.
Burning that midnight oil.
With that, um, the, um, and I don't know, Nate brought up?
He did.
He did.
Yes, it was very good news.
Other payment that we will be making this year too, that comes from, um, Eversource. So I did just wanna bring that up to you and make sure it was okay for me to sign this, now, um, just a couple things. I have spent a couple weeks reaching out to BAs, and I know they're all busy right now, a couple have gotten back to me with, oh, I've never done one. And I did do one in Melford, but my successor is gone, and the new one doesn't know, so I can't remember. Um, I may at some point have to come back to you and do a public hearing on this one, um, and I reached out to the auditor, and she just told me the accounting side that I. So, I just wanna make sure we're doing it all right, but, um, I, I would seek approval for, for you to allow me to go. So I just wanna make sure we're doing it all right, but, um, I, I would seek approval for, for you to allow me to go forward with this, if anything else is needed to be done. I, you know, we'll be right back with you, but more before we do this, um, I do have the permission to do the agreement with Affinity from the last meeting, so that, that's gonna go, but I wanted to just make you aware of. The lease, and I just, like I said, I've been trying to find out of a public hearings, and I honestly, I just can't remember, it's been.
Yeah, I was wondering, actually, cause I was like, I don't know, it's not really acquiring any new money, cause it's, cause it's already in the budget, but.
It will be, one of the things that does happen is, you know, I'm talking with the auditors, and I, and I knew this, um, there's new laws regarding any sort of long-term capital lease or anything of that nature, you will see it every year in the notes to the financial statements and so forth. Cause those fall, even if it were a two or three-year, um, contract with, that Justin has for software.
Right.
We now have to report stuff like that.
And like the printers and stuff.
Printers, yeah, yeah, but we are, are all purchased outright.
Oh, are they? I thought we went into a lease for those.
No.
No, we said it's cheaper, right?
Extra money and then.
I was gonna say, I mean, I was here for that, but.
I think we were thinking when we were discussing the, um.
Oh, cause we were in a lease before, maybe?
Yeah, we were in a lease before for the, the copier, and we were discussing.
All that, yeah, I think that's maybe what it was.
One of Tom's parting gifts was to buy all the copiers outright.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was my first time on, so.
Yeah, so we don't have any, but those don't appear, but they're really squeezing some of those gas requirements that are, we need to disclose.
Okay. Anything else? We good? Alright, um, do we need to retain anybody for committee reports or?
I mean, do we even have committee reports? I don't have, none of mine.
Committee, we have a few that we did meet on, but I don't see where we would need.
Need to keep anybody?
Haven't been here.
Um, I'd like Jane or any non-public, others than that, I believe, actually, um.
Do we need the principals for non-public or not?
Well, let me just put it this way, for the non-public section of the personnel side, I included, uh, a personnel packet.
Yes.
For salary, position, and so forth, if there aren't any questions about those, then we won't need the principals to remain, if you have questions about those.
I have a lot.
Employees that we hired. Then we would ask the principals to remain.
I didn't have anything specific.
No, they're all. I love the detailed reports in the front too. So it's like a little.
Yeah, it was lovely.
Maria, you're amazing, it's like a little table of contents.
I know.
You're great, that's where we are.
See you, come right back up.
So if there, if there's no questions, if.
No, I think we're good.
I only have one other brief item, so we wouldn't need to have anyone remain up.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
So we release you all, thank you for coming.
For all your hard work, everyone.
Yeah.
I can't hear you. Yes, please.
We'll take a quick, like, five-minute recess. As we go into non-public for, that is gonna be under, I gotta get my little thing back, I lost my little cheat sheet. We are on committee reports, so budget. Um, so, and my calendar says August thirtieth, I'm not sure we'll have one or not, well, we'll find out.
Yeah.
And that's just like my normal, like, our third Wednesday of every month, I have it in there, so maybe August.
To me, so I can come now a part of the group?
Yes.
Yay.
Yeah, but she's in.
That's good.
So that's good. Uh, community connections. I'm, I'm gonna try to put, get a post together about opening school date stuff, event stuff, so for each building.
Okay.
So that was helpful for the open house, cause I was like, what is the?
Yeah, cause it said open house.
I was like, when is the date? So, um, if there's any, if there's information like that. If I could get it, that'd be great, in like the next couple of days, that way I can get it out for this weekend. Um. Facilities, maintenance is Wayne.
We haven't had one.
Pass.
Haven't had one.
And legislation, we all know what's going on there. So quiet.
Belt to belt, that was it, we're done.
I mean, I think since the last time we met, she did sign some bills, like officially met anyway, she did sign some bills, I can't remember if it was before or after our June meeting or not, that she had signed.
It was in July.
Yeah.
July, you'll see some of those policies as a result of those signings.
Mm-hmm. Uh, personnel committee, we met, I forgot to write down the date we met, but it was just recently, wasn't it? Or we're gonna meet?
Feels like it was the twenty.
So I have in my calendar one for this month, that also says it's canceled, so I'm like trying to figure out if it's, we really have it, or we don't have it.
Could we, I don't.
That's how.
Happening thing, we weren't, we weren't.
It was for the twenty-sixth.
Yeah. So I think because you just met.
Yeah.
I think that one was canceled.
But we hadn't met for personnel since the twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah.
For a half hour, and then we had our special.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
And so our next one should be that last.
I have it on the twenty-sixth.
Tuesday of August, which is the twenty-sixth. I still, I still have it, um.
Yeah, but see, I have, I have it.
Yes.
And then I have it canceled personnel right above it. And I also put it in myself, so this is me, and this is Maria.
I do have it twice.
So I just wanna make sure it wasn't canceled.
Maybe one of them was canceled, cause it was in there twice.
No, this is mine, this is me putting it in.
I was gonna say that they were saying it was in twice too.
Oh, this is canceled and then personnel.
I would welcome it not being held, because of, between the eighteenth and the twenty-ninth, we're gonna be running around with our hair on fire.
Mm-hmm. What day was it on?
The twenty-sixth, this Tuesday, it's just, it's the personnel committee, so it's just mine.
And that's the teacher leave alone day here, uh, and I, I have the all-staff welcome and the cookout over.
I mean, I don't think we have anything pressing coming up in personnel anyway, so we can move it to, we can just do Septembers.
Right, so if we have anything like a surprise issue with personnel, we can do it, or as a whole at our meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And when's the September meeting?
For personnel?
Personnel is the twenty-third.
Should be that last Tuesday, right? Or is it a Monday?
I have it on the twenty-third, cause it's.
Tuesday.
It's the, it's the.
Oh.
Fourth, it's, we have five Tuesdays, but there's a, it's the fourth Tuesday, I have it every fourth Tuesday.
Okay. I'm just gonna put that on our calendar.
So.
And what time is that?
I have it running in my calendar consistently repeating.
Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
For what time?
I, we meet at four-thirty.
Okay, I'm just putting it in, so he sees it on the calendar.
Yeah, okay.
He probably has it, but.
I mean, if that works.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
I just, I have it running, like the budget committee meeting, I just have it running.
You have to hard schedule some of these.
Yeah, right.
You're gonna overschedule.
Exactly.
I got it.
I won't know that I actually might have something there. Alright, so, so then our August meeting is really canceled.
Sweet.
Okay, so delete. So I'll message Wayne about it, too.
Great, that saves me.
Yeah.
Chit-chat with him.
Wayne, cancel.
Going to White Mountain?
August.
That, listen, going to Maine with him first.
Meeting.
This month, then.
Get around.
Then October, I'm going to White Mountain.
There's my other message to message Mark and him about the other thing.
He has Fridays off.
What did I just write? I'm looking for my meeting about the, so I can circle that, message that.
We can, we met, we conquered.
Oh, no, not, oh my god, I just deleted that and future. Oh, my lord.
Select board, Mark's not here.
Alright, hold on. No, no. I gotta put this in my, I gotta put this in my calendar, hold on.
I do know the select board did, um, approve our road closure for, um, our back-to-school night, and did do their, um, oil bids.
Yeah, yeah. Repeat, sorry.
And if used at the town hall for complication on the twenty-fifth.
Great.
Okay, anyway, I'll fix that one later. Alright, policy selects for strategic plan, we met.
No.
No.
I know, are we, should we?
You probably.
Have something.
Need to again, uh, because it'll be for the board. Um, we did a ton of work, uh, the benefit of a retreat is you've no distractions.
Yeah.
And, and it's solid, and you're always together for the entire time, so, um, we have a really good, um, I think we have a really good.
I think it's really good.
Plan with.
We actually have a finance facility.
And technology, yes.
Section.
Took some editorial.
Blown away.
Uh, it's nothing like what Wayne will remember, but you're like, yeah, this looks great.
I like your imitation of it.
He's my buddy, I miss him. So I'm gonna put that together, uh, in a draft form, uh, to send out to the SLT, because our next job is to look for redundancies. And make sure that we don't have all this overlap, there are gonna be some through lines in all four of the priority areas, so we want everyone to focus individually now, like where do they think it fits better? We did it as a group, everybody heard the comments, took their notes, now it's, okay, what do I think, it comes back, that's the draft we bring to you, but I'll send you what we've done already, so that you.
I'm just wondering.
Credit for the, our progress.
Mm-hmm, I'm just wondering, because Sean is on that committee, if. Uh, once we have the draft, I mean, would it make sense to have us come back together, I mean, before it comes to the board?
If that's what you'd like to do as a board, I'm happy to do that, it wasn't the intention of the process.
Yeah.
Once it left the steering committee.
Wanna make sure that that's clear to Sean, I guess, then.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, I have no problem with Sean, because we're gonna be asking Sean to lay it out.
Right, right.
To lay it out and.
And do it the graphics, right.
I have no problem, I have no problem with that.
We can invite him to that meeting, that we're gonna. Yeah, we invited.
Evolved and to see what we've done.
Yeah, so when we roll it out to the board, maybe invite him to that meeting.
Yeah, that, I think that's perfect.
Yeah, we'll invite him to the board meeting.
Alright, perfect.
Yeah, we'll do that for sure.
Alright, tuition exploratory committee?
Haven't met.
Uh, wellness?
Haven't met.
Winchester tuition agreement, we did that thing.
I know, that is, do we still need that?
I don't know.
Cause we.
The tuition agreement, I mean, we're gonna.
Thing.
Still have tuition explorer.
Right.
Right, so we don't really need the Winchester Hinsdale tuition.
Done the agreement now.
Check.
Right.
And then some.
And then some. So we can probably eliminate that from next month.
You can.
For next.
Cause we have tuition explorer.
Yeah, still, so.